What's that?
Huh?
I don't think so.
You don't even smile, do you?
No.
Jean, Jean? Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're back, we're back in session. Mr. Bentonhausen?
Yes, there's, there's nothing to report from the closed session.
Okay. All right, we're calling to order the regular session of this council meeting at 6:12 today. If everybody would, before we get started, if everybody makes sure that your phones are either on silent or off.
On the call.
Yeah, two to the hard drive, one to the screen. And if everybody would please stand for the pledge and the invocation.
Do you want the honor, sir?
Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads with me. Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening. Our city is growing, our city is strong, our city gets tougher every day because of your strength and because of the Spirit of God that is so prevailing within our city. And Father, I ask that the Holy Spirit would just touch each and every one of our council members, our audience, our staff, that they may make the decisions for the city that are the decisions that you want made. In the name of Jesus, I submit this time into your hands. Amen.
Thank you very much. Okay, before we adopt the agenda...
I'll read it.
Oh yeah, let's do a roll call, that's a good call. I like that. Let's do a roll call.
Councilmember Johnson, Lisnovich.
Here.
Paris.
Here.
Mayor Protem Stumpf.
Here.
Mayor McGuire.
Here. To let everybody know, Councilmember Johnson is ill and she will not be here tonight. We don't know what the status is. We'll just let go of that. Okay, for the, to adopt the agenda, what we're, what, there's been a change. PH2 water standby fee is going to be tabled until the second council meeting in June. If we can get it back before then, we will. We'll get it moved up if that's the case, but it's, right now it's tabled. Anything, Mr. Bentonhausen? You want to? Okay. The public hearing two has been tabled until next month. With that being said, looking for a motion to approve the agenda?
Make the motion.
Second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Do we have, do we have the awards, sir? Okay, okay, all right. Madam Clark, late communications.
Thank you, Mayor. May 19th, G M Powers' erroneous estimates distort city's 1819 budget for end of April 2019. April, I'm sorry, May 20th, parcel tax reduction fallacy for 1920 and beyond. May 21st, audit guidance for fraud, waste, and abuse and misconduct on... ...affeants, including C.A. penal and government codes. Also from late communications from the last meeting is Cindy, City of Lynnwood's statement on California State Auditor's Report. And a paragraph taken from the study entitled Determining the Cost-Effectiveness of Utility Late Payment Charges. That's it.
Thank you, ma'am. Presentations. We're gonna go a little out of, out of kilter here, so City Treasurer, if you can do yours, please.
Good evening, staff, public, and our city council. The checks and bills we've receiving are just being paid as, as per normal. I am very pleased to announce that during the third quarter of this fiscal year, our investment funds, we've earned a total of $90,644 in interest. That's $71,633 from Leif, which is California, and Kern County had $18,981. Leif currently has almost three times as much money in reserve as Kern County, that's why the interest was less, and that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Anybody have any questions? Chief?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we're gonna be recognizing two of our city volunteers. Let me talk a little bit about our volunteer program, especially these two. They volunteered for the city for the last four years. They've done a lot of projects behind the scenes, and they have saved the city thousands of dollars on repairs that they've done, some good ideas on the city's adoptions, overall day-to-day care and operation of the shelter. They also do the driving to and from to make sure that the adoptees are, are sent out. There's just so much that they've done, and, and like I said, they've saved the city tens of thousands of dollars from the work they've done. At this time, can I ask Joel and our animal control officer to come up and help me present these awards? Jim Creighton and Dan Perry, please come up. A little certificate appreciation for Jim and Diane for recognition of their countless hours, energy, and dedication to maintaining and supporting the city's animal shelter as a volunteer of the California City Police Department. Thank you both. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, since Tammy's not here, it's gonna take two of us to do this. She usually does it by herself, so...
In California City Character Awards, this is very important, and we're glad that students and parents are here tonight. From Hacienda Elementary, we have Nathan Richard. Nathan is a great example of what it means to be truly honest. He's honest, caring, reliable, and a good friend. Academically, he recognizes his struggles and works hard to get past them, and he never gives up. Nathan is an awesome jet. Nathan, are you here? Brianna Moore, are you here? Okay. Next, from California City Middle School. Dylan Fair Wheaton, are you here? Okay. Dylan Fair Wheaton. Dylan has had, he has cleaned up the campus every day without getting a fair, without getting a prize all this last week. He has found rusty items on campus and brought them to the office because it was stated it was dangerous to others. Wheaton, there you go. Do we have Riley Sullivan? Riley worked through a very difficult transition this year. Riley has been subjected to negative comments by other students, but has always been keen and sweet and stated she would not want to get anyone in trouble due to the comments they were making. Very good, thank you. RPU Elementary, we have Alice Whittingill. Alice is a, Alice is a second-grade girl that constantly, consistently makes positive choices. She is kind, caring, and thoughtful for everyone. Alice is, always wears a smile and creates a positive attitude. Jeremiah Bates. Okay, from California City High School. Emmanuel Moreno. Cory Jackson. Cory has shown the six pillars of character throughout his senior year. He has been a trustworthy friend that others have gone to support, gone to, for support. He has been respectful to his peers and all faculty and staff on campus. He has fulfilled his responsibilities with grades, community service, and a portfolio, and portfolio work. He treats everyone fairly and even set up a club to help make sure that others do the same. He would like to start, he would give his shirt off his back to anyone who would need it. He's always caring and sharing, and he helps other students to work on classwork and problems that they may be dealing with. He is a model citizen with not just talking, but showing people that everyone is different and special, which makes the world a better place to live in. So, we're gonna do one more? Is Mr. Walpole here? Please come up.
Hi, Mr. Walpole. How are ya? I'm okay. So Tammy really wanted to make this special for you, so I know that she's very upset that she couldn't be here. So, of course, I can't write down all the wonderful things that she said, other than I think everyone can agree that how much you're still involved with the kids, and though you've been retired, you still tutor and involved with the school board, and I know that all three of my kids had you as a teacher just a few years ago. So, like I said, she wanted this to be very special for you, and she thinks the world of you. Thank you.
Alice, smile, baby.
Get in there, Jean.
Okay, ready, ready?
Big smile, big smile.
Nice. That was like gross stuff there.
Yeah, thank you.
Congratulations to everybody that was given that. We're going to civic, community organizations and announcements. Are there any civic, community organization announcements? Seeing none, going to consent calendar. Consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered routine and non-controversial and will be approved by one motion if no member of the council, staff, or public wishes to comment or ask questions. Public comments to be limited to three minutes, please. Roll call vote is required. CC1, check approval, or approve, check registry dated through 5/22/19. CC2, approve council minutes, 9/5/2018, 10/3/2018, 10/9/2018, 10/23/2018, and 5/14/2019. CC3, airport event, 2019 Race of Champions, Giant Scale Python Racing. And CC4, monthly staff reports. Does anybody have anything they want to comment on in reference to CC1, 2, 3, or 4?
Good evening, Al Hudson. On the check register, check number 105359.
105359?
Yes. That's to Bakersfield Well, Well and Pump for fifty, for $55,000. What was the total cost of this project? And how many bids were reviewed? And who was the lowest bidder?
Yes, sir. I don't think so. Now you should be.
Good evening, Mayor, council, public. In regards to Mr. Hudson's question, we, this is the first payment for the, for the project. I'm not certain about the bids that were collected. I think there were, I'm not certain, so I can follow up on that.
Okay.
But this, I can give a total report of the actual amount for the project at the next meeting.
And the number of bids?
We will get, we will get that answer to you.
Why don't we just table this payment until we have a dollar, a correct dollar amount?
Well, this is the first payment of this.
And we don't know what the balance is.
Well, we...
This was a project that was, came to council and it was approved, so...
Yeah, it was, is this the, is this the well, or, is that 4/29? It was, it was $400,000, I know.
Yes, but what was the lowest bid?
That I don't...
We don't have that information.
I don't have that information in front of me.
Okay, check number 105383 for $57,433. That's to Jones and Mayor. My question is, there's one invoice for, what, over forty, what, over $40,000. What is the separation between the contract advice and legal advice and the billed advice?
I'm gonna let, I'm gonna let...
I'm not sure I understand.
Yeah, could, could you?
Okay, is, as an example, as I said, there's one invoice for over $40,000, and then there's several invoices for lesser amounts. Which ones are inclusive of the contract amount? Because this looks like it's above and beyond the regular council services. And is this from various departments, or who authorized the...
Mayor time.
Finish up with your question.
It's broken, we try to break it out according to how the city wants. If there's a specific project, such as maybe all cannabis-related items, or, so the larger one does reflect the main retainer and, and contract, yes.
Okay, one last, check number 105422.
Can we get an answer to you on that one, sir? Because since your time's up, please?
Well, we were interrupted and the clock didn't stop.
So what was the last check number?
105422. That was for Quaid Cof Consulting for $10,572.38.
That was cannabis, or, or not cannabis, planning, Sequo. Yeah. If you, do you have that one with you, sir? I believe that's planning with Sequo, dealing with Sequo.
Sequo?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, sir?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Ron Smith. I think Mr. Hudson has a very legitimate question in regards to the $400,000 well project when he asked how many bids were taken. There have been smaller projects that have been done at City Hall where there haven't been any bids put out. I think that's a legitimate question. It should be put out for, for bids and not to take one, one particular price. I think before you can, you can choose to put money in, money out on that, you need to know, and the citizens need to know, how many bids were there, and not just take one price. We know that there have been projects that have done here that have been not bidded. There have been extras on a project without even knowing what it's gonna cost before directing it to be done. And this is a lot of money. So I think it's a legitimate question Mr. Hudson has, and the citizens, and you should know before you go and choose to decide on this, how many bids there were on this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor?
Sir?
To answer his question, at the time it was brought before council, we were given three bids, and we were told that was the lowest bid, and that's why we approved it. That's all I can say on the matter at this time.
Okay, thank you. Is there, does anybody else have any other questions on CC1, 2, 3, or 4? Seeing none, we're bringing it up here. Sir?
Check number 105379 on page four at the very bottom, Granite Construction Company. Says pothole repairs, $7,527.24. Council, do you recall us authorizing Granite Construction to do pothole repairs?
I don't recall that.
Just to bring it to everyone's attention. And then I had...
I know we get cold mix from them a lot, but, that's cold mix or not.
Also, Robert Daniels, it would be check number 105404 on page 10, to air rate and top dress Tierra del Sol for $2,600. Council, does anyone recall us authorizing that amount of money?
I don't think that's usually brought up, because what'll happen is, well, prior to the, the prior manager of there, they would have a, they would do what their budget, you know, do their...
Within their budget.
It was within their budget, and I, and they usually just give that to us, and they, since they were managing it, they took care of that. So, I think same category, if that makes sense?
It just, I was surprised that we have an individual instead of the city doing the air rate and top dress. So, that was my question. Thank you.
Sir, do you have any questions? Sir, do you have any questions?
Some of the spending, I mean, I, I hear what you say, Mayor, on, on, they have a certain amount of money and that's in their budget, but that's not really how expenditures should be done. You know, when they do an annual budget, and they give us the amount that they're gonna spend on personnel, the amount that they're gonna spend on replacing equipment, I'm sorry?
Since the city's taken over, there's been no annual budget.
Understand that. But the way that previously, again, the previous manager, his philosophy was different than what I have seen as, as normal spending of, of the city's money. So, I think that Councilman Paris, the way, what he brought up, and the questions that some of the citizens have had, they...
They're legit.
Well, again, that's, that's on how you, it depends on your interpretation of how expenditures should be done. So, I think that what we need to do in this council is we need to work on that and talk about that, maybe agendize it for a closed session and talk about how expenditures are done. And, you know, just because you have a certain amount of money, in the past, what the city has done is, if they didn't spend all that money, they looked at the remainder, remaining money as reserves. The previous manager didn't look at it that way. He looked at, if you have a certain amount of money, you have a certain amount of money. And so those things need to be codified, and we need to just say, okay, if you end up with this amount of money, it goes into a, an actual escrow account. And as the councilman pointed out earlier, any expenditures over a certain amount, maybe they need to come to the council to say that they're spending it. Just because you might have 3 million in your budget, or 8 million, or whatever it is, you can't just go and spend the 8 million the way you want.
Any questions in reference to CC1, 2, 3, 4?
No.
Okay. That being said, looking for a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion, but I think that, are we gonna leave out the one that we're, the ones that we're waiting for questions for? Are we gonna...
We will, we will write, there'll be a written response, like we've done in the past, to the people that have asked it.
Okay, so, that being said, I make a motion that we approve CC1 through 4.
I'll second that motion.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Johnson? Lisnovich?
Yes.
Paris?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Stumpf?
Yes.
Mayor McGuire?
Yes. Public hearing number one. Aspomall Landscaping and Lighting District Assessments for FY '19 and '20. Mr. Finance Director? Hang on for a second. Yeah, I gotta open the public hearing, thank you. This public hearing is declared open. Now that I hit B, we're going to C, staff reports.
Good evening again. We in the finance department are asking council to adopt the resolution to adopt the engineer support for the Aspomall Landscaping. report for the Aspen Mall Landscaping and Lighting District for fiscal year nineteen twenty, as well as a resolution for the city ordering the levy and collection of assessments for the Aspen Mall Landscaping and Lighting District for fiscal year nineteen twenty.
And this is a yearly?
This is an annual.
Annual thing.
Process that we go through. We have it budgeted and it's just a formality.
Does council have any questions? Not really. Do you have any questions, sir? Okay, since council doesn't, city clerk, anything to report on communications with this subject matter?
No, sir.
Thank you. Calling for this public testimony now in reference to PH one. So does anybody from the public have anything they wish to address in reference to this?
Karen Macedonio, California City. I'm curious about the word district. I'm not sure that I really understand what the Aspen Mall Lighting and Landscaping District
Basically, it's the businesses in there. They, they're, the, pardon?
Property owners.
They formed.
Property owners.
The property owners formed their own little group, thus a district, and this is dealing with them, the property owners only, not the other public.
Okay, so they're self-funded and even though this is coming before the city, it's not city funds?
No, because we still have to do a resolution dealing with it. Go ahead.
The property owners inside the the district voted to tax themselves and the money that they collect from the taxes is used to maintain the Aspen Mall. It's not the businesses, it's the property owners that voted and approved a tax to be collected.
So it's collected on their tax bills annually?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, just, there's a, when you create an assessment district, by definition, the city has to be involved for that assessment portion of it, but it is the business owners that are, that are paying.
Property owners.
Property.
The property owners, excuse me, yes.
Okay, so technically, it's the Aspen Mall Landscaping and Lighting Assessment District?
I don't know what the official name of it is, but yes, the Aspen Mall Landscaping and Lighting District.
Any other questions from the public? Seeing none, looking for a motion to close public hearing?
Make that motion.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bringing it back up here, council discussion.
This is boilerplate.
Yeah.
We're collecting it so that they can take better care of the mall. It's a good thing.
At that, looking for a motion to adopt a resolution number five nineteen twenty-seven eighty-seven of the City Council of the City of California City, California amending and/or approving the engineer's report for the Aspen Mall Landscaping and Lighting District fiscal year twenty nineteen twenty twenty. That's the first one, because we're going to have two. So looking for a motion for that one.
Can't we do it all in one motion?
I can, I'll continue on. And to adopt a resolution number five nineteen two seven eight eight of the City Council of the City of California City, ordering the levy and collection of assessments for the Aspen Mall Landscaping and Lighting District fiscal year twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. That's.
I make the motion to approve both resolutions.
I second that.
Got a first and second. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Lysinovich?
Yes.
Paris?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Stump?
Yes.
Mayor McGuire?
Yes.
Before we continue to to our legal counsel, when is the ultimate deadline for, and the purpose of this is to allow us to place this assessment on their tax bills?
Right.
When is the last opportunity to make changes to assessments to the tax bill?
They they have to be in time so that they can put it on the tax bills, which it's usually, I believe, around August tenth.
August tenth, okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, continued business. CB one, reduction in developer impact fees. Senior building official Bergen.
Thank you, Mayor. So in an effort to bring growth and development to our city, staff with the help of citizens and organizations has studied effects of development fees. Staff and others looked at a study published by the Center for California Real Estate and Tenor Center. Also, we we listen to the citizens and developers in the area and staff believes that our fees are a little too high and that's probably what's not helping us grow in terms of getting single-family dwellings built and other multifamily dwellings. So we're bringing forth a recommendation to council to temporarily waive for a period of three years, certain development impact fees and to introduce a fast track permitting process.
Anybody?
What what happened at the Mojave Unified School District? Would they, would they approve?
They're going to vote in their first meeting in June and what was recommended to the board was that they do a fifty percent reduction. They they saw the city thinking about doing what they called a forty-eight percent reduction, so they were going to match us and do a fifty. So they're considering dropping their, I I think right now for a single-family dwelling, they charge three seventy-nine a square foot, they're going to drop that in half and only charge a dollar.
Ninety? Are we, are we reducing ours by fifty percent or? I think we're reducing ours totally. Totally, aren't we?
Yeah, well, we looked at the whole, what would it cost to like pay for a permit for a single-family dwelling? If you include all the fees, the AVAC and everything, it could be as high as like twenty-eight thousand dollars for a sixteen hundred square foot home. And then off of that, there's certain reductions. If you're not connecting issue, it's a little less. So there's different things that vary, but the way the district looked at it, they they put the numbers together based off what the data they had and they, at the time, they considered it around forty-eight percent. So we're trying to also actually lower ours by a little more, hoping that the school district might lower theirs by a little more, too. But that's not certain. Right now, what was recommended to them was a fifty percent reduction in their fees.
Okay, and who who attended the school board meeting for representing the city?
I I did.
Did you? And and you you found them to be receptive and and they and they considered the total permit fees collected as the the reason for going to the forty-eight percent?
Yeah, that's that's what was recommended, I believe it was Keith. And yeah, they were definitely receptive. I believe only Dr. Adams spoke, but I think he he I think has the same mindset that staff does, where it's like what we're really trying to do here is bring in development. We're trying to bring in like housing tracks and that's what we're trying to, that's why we're going for the three years, because it takes about two years to go through the sequel process if you do a big housing track, two hundred homes, two hundred and fifty homes. So we're trying to incorporate that. You're going to get your your houses that are built just, you know, by somebody's uncle that has a lot or something like that. We're not really targeting those people. We're trying to bring in real growth, real development, at least a couple of nice housing tracks.
Thank you.
Anybody else up here have any questions at this time? Sir?
No.
Don, any questions? Anybody from the public have any questions dealing with this?
Good evening. DJ Tuig representing MicalCity.org. I'd like to approach clerk with a couple documents.
While city clerk is passing that along, just a couple of comments about the relationship and communications between the city and the school district. We've had a chance to participate in the conversations and I've really been inspired by the district superintendent, assistant superintendent. They're really trying to get their arms around what economic growth would look like, what attracting working families would actually look like, and have been pretty responsive to the idea of this is more than a reduction in fees, this is actually an economic policy and that's been fed back to us. And so I could say to you that the district has taken a pretty proactive role in sharing this idea of what do we want California City to look like. The concern is that maybe the city wasn't reducing as much as the city could and that's how I received that and so they weren't going to budge quite as much. We had recommended in our option B in the table that you look at there that the district would look at Tehachpah as an, as a model. Tehachpah's at sixty-nine cents a foot and so the local district at three seventy-nine a foot is considerably higher. I made comment at the last board meeting that even if they, the district dropped theirs in half, that would still be almost three times higher than Tehachpah. And so that's not really competitive and we are lobbying still and we spent time on the phone continuing to work with the district officials, saying, let's really try to compete with Tehachpah. That really is the goal here. And so in the recommended actions that you have before you now on the table, you'll see that the permits is building official Joe mentioned approach almost twenty-eight thousand dollars for a sixteen hundred square foot home, but if you take the school fee entirely out and the developer impact fees entirely out, it reduces to around ten thousand. If the district eliminates their fee entirely, we could get it down to around nine thousand. And so I think the wiggle room right now for the district may be between sixty-nine cents a foot and maybe one eighty-nine a foot. That appears to be where the wiggle room is. Also, comments were made that maybe we ought to be really, really pleased, the builders particularly ought to be really, really thankful that the district is working with us in this regard. And I think that's really important that when we do the messaging, if this is approved by council, that we do have a public relations message that your council would embrace and and staff would embrace. So when we represent this to the Building Industry Association, it really is a synonymous theme here in California City that we want to fast track and we want to attract working families. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Jim Creighton, California City. In reading through the supporting documentation, I'm assuming that the residential water fee you're referring to in the resolution is in actuality the impact fee, correct or not?
Correct. Leave some.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The fees the city is waiving totals about fifty-six nine, nine hundred fifty, fifty-six hundred ninety-seven dollars. With an AVAC fee of over ten thousand and MUSD charging by the square foot, does this really make developers want to come here and build more? It seems to me that this is just a small drop in a bucket. Granted, you multiply that over two hundred homes, it's considerable, but they will pass that on to the people buying homes. The master fee schedule is being changed to reflect an adoption of the AVAC three-quarter inch meter fee. This will, this will replace what in the master fee schedule? And what is the AVAC fee going to be? That's not quoted anywhere in the resolution, nor in the supporting documentation. Why wasn't the forty-page study by Dr. Sarah McWater included in the supporting documentation for this meeting? It also wasn't provided in the agenda for the five April special meeting. The agenda always includes all kinds of minutia for all things considered by the council. It seems like only a select few have had a chance to review this report. I'd like to ask that this be made available to all the public, not just a select few. Doesn't seem like it's too transparent to me. But my main question is, will current ratepayers be burdened with these fees that you are now waiving at any time during the three years? The money has to come from somewhere to pay for these, especially the connection fee, which is done, has to be done by the city. All connections have to be done by the city. That's in the master fee schedule. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Yes, sir?
Mr. Mayor, counsel, Ron Smith. Commissioner Creighton is a very bright guy and appreciate the data that that he brings. Appreciate Mr. Tuig and the data that he brings. Bottom line is something has to be done to spur growth in our community. And half of zero is still zero. And these developer impact fees, we're not getting them anyways. And if there's a three, a three-year opportunity for developers to come in here, we're not getting the money anyways. It's an opportunity to see some growth that doesn't involve something that is grown out of the ground. And and we need to have more rooftops in our community. And I would encourage you to, if nothing else, this is a test. If no houses are built, there's no developments that occur in three years, we didn't lose any money. And if houses are built, then we gain some rooftops and I would encourage you to to really ponder that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else?
Good evening again, Al Hudson. I believe my memory serves me correctly that the, that Mr. Platt arbitrarily set those fees without any cost analysis. So therefore, the elimination of them is completely justified. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Karen Macedonio, I'd like to request, when we get to the minutes, that these public comments be detailed rather than just saying public commented, because these are the kind of conversations that we need to look back on later. Thank you.
It's possible to get a, an audio copy of any minutes, I mean, of any meeting. So you can just bring a thumb drive and the city will make a copy of the, of everything. They record everything, so you can get that.
And I appreciate that, but earlier in this meeting, we talked about what was the discussion about the bid for the Ag well in the Central Park. And I think there are some things, I'm taking a few notes tonight, but I think there are some things that it would serve us well if the minutes included at least highlight rather than just a comment, the public commented or what it was, because ultimately, our long-range goal is that we're all together in this, that we're all a team working together. And it's going to make a big difference if we have the ability to refer back and make sure that we're building on the foundations that the council is setting. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Bringing it back up here. Anybody have any questions?
No questions, just I agree with Pastor Smith. Fifty percent of nothing is nothing and I think that I I understand Commissioner Creighton's thoughts on that, but I think that if we can create any kind of way that we can create building in our city, we need to do it and hopefully by the reduction for three years, if developers don't come then, then I guess they didn't like our baseball team. So we'll try and do that and see what what happens.
Don, do you have anything, sir? I've got a few questions. There are four hundred and eighty-two cities in this state and I'm only worried about California because that's where we're located. How many of those cities have been considering or are in fact doing this? Does anybody know?
I'm not sure how many cities are lowering their fees, but one of the, and the housing policy in California City report that I discussed in the staff report, it was made available in that first meeting we had, this is a continuation. So that first meeting we had here were, all the information that I discussed in my staff report that we looked at, research and stuff, it was there. So I apologize for not including this. I was just trying to minimize the amount of paper we use when we print the the whole agenda. But this is a really good thorough report and it talks about most of the cities in California. California and it talks about there being different problems in different cities. So it works for one city, might not work in this city and what works here might not work there. But as we looked at the whole totality of the report, we just felt that we're going to try as much as we can as to try to stimulate some growth and get some population in our city.
Well, these are all dealing with impact fees and an impact fee is a fee that you pay for a service that will impact the service being supplied by the city. Looking at the numbers, I came out with $9,186 per house. And that's the waters. That's just water that we would be waiving. My concern is that if we have 100 homes built, or let's say the, the, the building, God smiled down on us and say, "You're going to build 300 cities your first year." That's over $3 million that the city would be waiving. The city would not get. And this, and these services have to be paid for. And the city won't have the money. That means it's going to roll on the ratepayers, the people that are, the customers. At that type of money, they would be looking, if you break it down, it's going to be their water bills are going to double minimum. I don't have my phone on. But that is, that is a concern. That is a big concern of mine. This is, I get that we should need to try and stimulate building, but it's that way throughout the United States. There's not a lot of building going on. I know there's building going on in Tehachpah. There's a division, subdivision being built up there or division of neighborhood. But that is, that you're looking at water connection fee waived, water impact fee waived, the one-inch meter waived. That's a lot of money that the city won't recover. I can't, I can't see that because I don't want to see the ratepayers get, watch, we have people that can't make their payments now for water. What's going to happen if their, if their bill doubles? You pay $51, $52 this month and then we get 100 homes going, your bill then becomes $102. That, that is a concern. You're looking at materials, personnel hours to attach it. It doesn't come free. There's, and you can't just magically go, "It's done." So basically, you look at that money and you would, let's say the nine, the 9186 and let's say 100, so you times it by 100, then divide it by the amount of water accounts that we have, which is 4,455, and then divide it by 12. And that's what their bill's going to be. You're looking at how many sewer customers that we have? We've got 34, 36. None of this stuff comes free. And when the comment was made, that the builders would get that money back when they sold their homes to prospective buyers. But the city doesn't get any of that. That's money going into their pocket. And then we get, I'm so far off the trail. My concern is our ratepayers. It doesn't matter, you know, do I want builders? I do. But at what, at what cost? I don't want my water bill going up doubling, whether it's two cents or $2,000. I don't want to have to pay for somebody else's benefit. And going, leaving for a second, because let's explain a couple of things. The city has had seven water main breaks or water, water main blowouts year-to-date. Last month, we had two alone. Our system has failed and we're trying to improve it. Year-to-date, we've had 1,144 water main repairs. 52 of those came last month. The other problem that we're looking at is SB 998. This goes into effect February 1st of next year. And this tells us when we can and can't collect fees due on late water bills. You won't be able to shut people's water off for a while. So the city's losing money. The other concern that just came up when I was talking to Assemblyman Lackey is that our governor is talking about taxing groundwater. So that's another concern because the city is going to pay it and it's going to be passed on to the ratepayers. So going back to this, yeah, it's a great idea, but I can't, I can't in good conscience vote for this because the city's going to be losing all the way around.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I hear what the Mr. Mayor is saying, however, how many, how much construction have we had in the last three years or last five years? We haven't had hardly any. And, you know, if you don't try and do something to generate construction, you're never going to have it.
Do we have a report on that? There you go.
Actually, I was just reviewing with the permit fee paid report we had for calendar year 21, 2018 to 1231, 2018. We actually received a total of $216,105 last calendar year. I was not part of the discussion in finance to review what this was going on. I do have sort of a concern with what we are suggesting at this point. We actually did budget for these impact fees and we so far have collected about 40% of them. It's something that I think we need to kind of address, but in terms of if the, has the activity been slow or latent, but it's not what the reports are showing in terms of permits issued.
Okay, I hear what you're saying, however, question I have for you is of that amount of money that you mentioned, how much of that is for new, single-family home construction?
I understand the question, Councilmember Stump, and that is a process that I'm having to deal with, with the books in terms of where revenues and transactions are posted to. So while I do have an overall number, I'm not able to kind of separate it out.
Okay, and I wasn't trying to ambush you. I'm just trying to, the thing is, if you look on CCB alone, you can see that Albertos, they probably contributed to the amount of money that you collected. The other two-story building, I don't know the name of that, but it looks like a, like some type of strip mall that's going to be going in. Some of the money might have been from that. So you can see and probably some of the money might have gone into the cannabis buildings that are going up. But I, you know, I'm not to say that I'm an Uber driver and I know all of California City, but I have seen very little new construction in the last five years. I hear that Leonard Martin is building a new home and that might be some of that money in there, but I, like I said, I beg to differ that there's a lot of new, single-family home construction going and that industrial money that we're going to get, we're going to get that regardless. But what we're trying to look at, at least what I think that we should be trying to do is be like Roseman. If you look at Roseman in the last five years, they have probably three different areas that have been new for new homes and those tracts have maybe 30 to 40 homes inside of there, but that's the kind of stuff that we need here. We need to get KBU or any other builder like that up here in Cal City and have them build some homes here.
And there's no argument there on that, but the problem is, who's going to pay for it? Who's going to pay for all the fees that are waived?
But, Mr. Mayor.
The definition of an impact fee is what I think you're missing, Mr. Mayor. An impact fee is something that's attached, that reflects the added cost or added impact, impact of that service that that, that unit will give, bring to the community. Adding one house to Cal City is not an impact on the water system.
But a neighborhood is.
And the same thing, you're charging a sewer impact fee on houses that don't even have sewer. What's their impact to the sewer system?
That one, that's going to have to be brought up here to where that can be redirected.
But, I mean, but that's my point, though, is that these impact fees don't reflect the change in cost structure that will be brought to those departments by, by having a new unit brought into town.
I'm not talking a single.
That these impact fees were really designed more for construction of developments, for things like street impacts where you build 100 homes and now you're going to have to have a traffic light and that's part of what these impact fees would bring. They would pay for those things. Or if you had to increase the capacity of a street, that's an impact that, that's where an extra unit adds demand. An extra house isn't going to add demand to the water system. It's not going to increase an impact to the community. Now, you are talking about using impact fees to rebuild a water system that doesn't reflect what the new house brings. It has to have some sort of relationship to the cost of the community and it doesn't. As far as AVEC offering to charge us, give us a one-inch meter but charge us the three-quarter rate, that's a gift from AVEC. That's not an impact to the, to the fees the city collects. That's in agreement with AVEC. But as far as the impact fees, you've already made the decision to put the cost of replacement and repair of our water lines on the rate users, which wasn't proper in the first place.
No, that isn't what I'm saying.
No, that's what you did.
No, I haven't done that.
Wait, 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 wait. We're not paying with, we're not asking the rate users to pay for five, five miles of new.
That's what's going to happen.
That's what's supposed to happen this, that's supposed to have already happened. We made water rate increases so that we could replace five miles of water lines every year. Is that not what we did? Isn't that, isn't that why we justified doubling water rates?
But now they're going to double again.
No, 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 no.
No, yes, yes, yes. Who's going to pay for it?
Who's going to pay for which?
Who's going to pay for all these?
You put it on the, you already put it on the water users.
I'm talking, I'm not talking that. I'm talking about the new developers. If we go and we get 300 houses in here, 100 houses, 50 houses, who is going to pay for those waived fees? The impact fees? Who's going to pay for it?
There is no impact. That's the point.
Well, our system has not been working real well. It's still leaking. We're still getting blowouts and stuff. The system is, needs more work and now we're going, now when you go and put more on that, thus the impact fees, you put more homes on there, that puts a strain on the system.
Well, I suggest to you that this is a three-year moratorium and if you saw significant construction, you could revisit this whole process and reestablish the fees. The question is, is that I don't think the sewer, the sewer impact fee is the one that's just diabolical to me. How can you, how can you even charge an impact when the people don't have it? I mean, why'd you do that?
Why didn't do it?
Of course you did it. It, I didn't, it happened after I got off this council.
As far as I know, the impact fee for the sewer was dealing with the grinders because of Lahontan.
Has nothing to do with a house. It's on septic.
No, I'm talking about new construction.
New, new construction's not going to have sewer, it may not have sewer either.
And that's what I'm talking about, though.
But this is charged to every house. The sewer impact fee is placed on every new building permit.
Then that's something that we need to look at. You don't hear an argument on that.
I'm just saying, well, you can vote how you choose, but don't call, don't choose to make an impact fee a reflection on rebuilding the system.
I'm not.
It's supposed to be, it's supposed to be used to increase the capacity of the system, not repair the system.
But if the system can't handle what it has now, or it's very close to being maxed out now, what's going to happen when you start putting all these homes in?
But on this thing right here, where I live, I don't have sewer. So where I live, somebody building a house, if I built a house next door to me, I have a lot next door that I own, I would be paying $3,298 for sewer when I don't have sewer.
Well, you shouldn't be charged for it then.
But is, that's what we're charging people now.
Well, then that has to be addressed. That's what we're trying to do.
That's what we're trying to do.
But that's, I get that, but I'm talking about waiving fees that are going to, when building starts, when, when you have neighborhoods going in, the money's got to be paid for.
But we can reevaluate this in one year and re-impose it.
And if we had 50 homes coming in, just think of the revenue that would bring to the city. 50 homes, this is nothing compared to the revenue that 50 homes would bring in.
And what about the people that can't pay their water bills, that their bills are going to double?
Their water bills will not double.
You can't shut it off now. Law won't let you.
I have nothing else to say, man. Just, I don't, I don't agree with it.
It needs to be changed.
Anybody else got anything? Round two. Bring it on.
Good evening again, DJ Tuig. Mayor McGuire, thank you for your earnest comments. I know that you care deeply about folks that receive a water bill and the rates that they're paying. And Mr. Paris, I know you've expressed some concern about the water rates as well. What I'd like to address to you is the fallacy that the city of California City has been sold over the past several years, that the way to rebuild the water system is to stick it to the developers. That's not how you do it. You do it through the collection of new water users. So if you have, in your example, 100 new homes, you'd have 100 new ratepayers that are connecting to an existing line, a line that already exists, that would have more folks helping to pay to maintain that line. Trying to stick a new developer with all of the cost of maintaining an existing line is inappropriate. And in our recommended actions, we actually address that, both Kern Tax and my Cal City, saying to you, until you have the ability to actually substantiate any developer impacts, it's inappropriate to pass it on to new development. You made comments about a system that failed, but yet you have property owners that buy property here and they'd like to build here. And hundreds have come to the counter and told what the fees are and have walked away because the fees are excessive. How are you going to repair that system if you're not going to attract development in the community because your fees are too high? So it'd be much better in the example that we've shown you, if there's 100 or 500 homes, if you look at your table, you'll actually see revenue coming in to support city staff, to support departments. The idea is that instead of having one home on every 10 lots, someday we might have two homes on every 10 lots. And so you're amortizing the cost of maintaining that water system. The way you're doing it now, good luck to you because the city will decay, the city won't be able to sustain itself and most of the, most of the permits that you're seeing in the city are as a result of very innovative regulations for cannabis. If we are able to fast-track the permits, we will see more development in California City than we've seen in the past 50 years. But it's time that we actually make the change to fast-track the permitting process, go to the industry and say, "We welcome new development in California City and we have competitive fees." It's very important that you adopt this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mayor and Council, I'm Keith Middleton. I built a house here thirty years ago, and it cost me a hundred and ten thousand dollars. I was paying less than five hundred dollars annually for taxes, because I fell under Prop 13, and today my house is more than doubled in value, and I pay over two thousand dollars in taxes. That two thousand dollars, if you stra- uh, you know, that's clear profit to the city. Uh, well, after the Kern County, everybody else takes their part out. But you're getting the tax base with the new homes, because new homes cost more, regardless of this impact fee, and we're going to get it on the other side from the property taxes and, and residents using the city's facilities on the backside. So it looks to me, we need the people here at a rate that they can afford to pay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I have a real short comment. In the last ten years, there has not been three hundred, two hundred, one hundred, or fifty new homes built. So therefore, Mr. Mayor, your argument is a fallacy. Simple, simple math. Look at the history. It plain and simply is not there and does not support your position.
Thank you.
Well, not a problem on that. The, the one thing that we're looking at, if you look at, uh, the, uh, the staff report, everything is based on supposition. If you look at it, and it says that, e- even in the staff report, it says that you can't say how much it's going to be because there's too many variables. There, there's that, that thing. So I respond to that with the same thing, and I'm told I'm wrong, but everybody says this is right. I'm just trying to bring up, I'm bringing up points that are concerns to me, that our elderly and people that are not, um, as, that have the money, they have water for their families. That's my concern. That's, that's, that's my only concern. I, yes, do I want more building? Absolutely.
Is the sacrifice necessary?
For who? Who do we sacrifice?
On the water, want to make sure that it's affordable. That water rate done in two thousand fourteen was a numeric money game, is all that was. That was not a true study. That was challenged at that time, and the only way to correct it and make sure that water is affordable is through a new water rate, comprehensive water rate study done by a reputable firm. And I've given you, Mr. Mayor, the name of the company-
Yes.
H D R-
Yes.
That is an international company that has assets in this excess of two-point-two billion dollars and a ten-thousand-member staff. And that is what I would recommend, that you ask, you, that you all direct the city manager to, uh, employ to do a affordable rate study. They've done it in other communities in the area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Ron Smith. I want to thank, uh, Mr. Middleton for, uh, his wise words. And, um, typically, a commentator is someone who states about something, but an expert is someone that agrees with you, and Mr. Middleton is an expert tonight, and I want to thank him for his, for his expert words that he used. I, I hope that there are not people that are listening that think that their water rates are going to double. These are impact fees.
Correct.
Uh, impact fees. We're not getting hardly any impact fees from homes right now because they're not being built.
Correct.
And that's the issue. But when saying that, that water rates will double, that is, the sky is falling. This has nothing to do with doubling water rates, but that's what you said, sir.
I, I did say, I'm not saying the sky's falling.
And talking about sacrifice, there's no sacrifice. This is adding, these are adding roofs. And we need to go and grow our town with people that want to come here, that want to, um, live in our community, that want to work, that are providing, that are providing new homes, and, uh, I would encourage you, uh, I would encourage you to try this for three years. If it doesn't work, we didn't lose anything. If it does work, we gain some rooftops. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Raj Millian. Um, I think we should try to give this a chance and try to let developers come in and give it some fresh blood to try to see and encourage them to come in. Instead of three years, maybe we can review it every year, see if it works. If it doesn't work, change it, but, uh, give it a go, and, you know, if a year makes it more comfortable, then let's try that. Let's switch it up to make it work. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else? Bringing it up here. Looking for a motion.
I'll make that motion that we, um, a resolution, um, of the City Council of the City of California City temporarily waiving development impact fees for a period of three years and introducing fast-track permitting.
I second that motion.
We have a first and a second roll call vote, please.
Can't, excuse me, Councilmember Lysinovic?
Yes.
Paris?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Stump?
Yes.
Mayor McGuire?
No.
Motion carried.
Thank you. How'd that feel? I feel with my fingers, so. Uh, let me get, uh, one of that. Okay, new business one. G I S data updates and maintenance project. Sergeant Hightower, are you here?
Mayor, I'm going to have, uh, Talia present tonight's presentation. She's worked on this-
Okay.
-project.
He doesn't like talking in public. I know that.
Still had a couple of days left on vacation, so I was going to honor those. Talia's been working with Sergeant Hightower on this, uh, project, so she's well-versed.
Hi, I'm Talia Attila Home, one of our dispatchers at the police department, as well as our key sat manager. So I'm going to read his staff report that he prepared since he's not here. So the California State Police Department Dispatch Center is currently outdated when it comes to mapping. What the mapping system is supposed to do is give accurate locations for incoming calls for service, in addition to showing the location of on-duty officers in real time. Our current mapping system, which is through our CAD system RIMS, is not accurate and does not do these things. It's outdated and in need of replacement. What we are trying to accomplish is to prepare for the launching of Next Gen nine-one-one, which improves P S A P ability to help manage call overload, natural disasters, and transferring of nine-one-one calls and proper jurisdictional responses based on location tracking. It'll be digital or internet protocol-based system that, rather than analog system, and will enhance emergency number services to create a faster, more resilient system that allows voice, photos, video, and text messages to flow seamlessly from the public to nine-one-one network. With that being said, Next Gen nine-one-one will not be compatible with our current outdated mapping system, which needs to be updated to a G I S geographic information system map. This new map would take approximately seven months to create, and then it would be installed into all the C C P D dispatch center computers. Our current system is compatible for this upgrade, and therefore no costs will be incurred for software updates to our computers. We have attended several P S A P meetings with Cal O E S, and their expected release date for the Next Gen nine-one-one is approximately twenty-twenty-one. If we do not have the correct mapping system, our P S A P will basically become obsolete. We have reached out to Geocom, who works directly with and for Cal O E S, and they have given us a quote for what it would cost to make the map skins for us. These map skins will include the first and second communities, and we'll be able to label these maps with our own key or legend. For example, in the second community, some roads are only accessible with four-wheel-drive vehicles. We would be able to color-code these roads so that the C C P D dis- C C P D dispatch can relay that information to first responders, ensuring that they take the most direct and appropriate route, thus decreasing response times and being able to provide B L S and A L S care more quickly. The new mapping system is also compatible with our mobile data terminals, our M D Ts, and each patrol car would be updated and be able to view the same map information as the dispatchers. Each year, Cal O S, Cal O E S sets aside funding for P S A P agencies. This funding can be used for a variety of dispatch-related items, such as the required G I S mapping system. We currently have forty-three thousand nine-hundred-twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents in O E S funds, and the quote given by Geocom is thirty-four thousand nine-hundred-seventy-three dollars and fifty cents. I have, we've reached out to, uh, we haven't reached out to other G I S mapping companies as Geocom is the preferred vendor for Cal O E S. And as stated earlier, they work closely together and both know and understand what is needed to ensure our P S A P in the Next Gen nine-one-one ready comparable, uh, ready and compatible. The total cost of the project was quoted at thirty-four thousand nine-hundred-seventy-three dollars and fifty cents. However, California State would be required to pay the sales ta- tax on the total, and at seven-point-two-five percent, our cost would be two thousand five-hundred-thirty-five dollars and fifty-eight cents. And attached is the Geocom proposal for it.
Uh, does there, is there, anybody have any questions up here? I've just got one. Will we be able to interlock this with all departments? Well, in other words, uh, the P D has, will have their maps. Would Fire be able to get their maps? Public Works, Streets, Water, where everything can be, can put on one program or all the other programs can talk to each other?
So they're going to put it in our CAD system RIMS, and wherever there's, whoever's RIMS accessible will have access to the map as well. It would just, the CAD system would need to be-
Yeah, I know, but things are restricted with P D-
Mm-hmm.
...because of laws. But what I'm saying is, is there any way that we can utilize this and bring into, and bring in all our other departments so everybody's talking, so if there's a natural disaster or some, you see what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, it, will they be able to talk to each other?
So anywhere that we would put the map, we, it's basically ours. Once they give it to us-
Yes.
-it's our software and everything like that. So we would be able to put it, say, if there was a natural disaster and we have an E O C setup, we, and there's RIMS there or whatever system we're using, yes, it would be compatible to put it there.
Yeah, but Public Works doesn't have RIMS.
No. Yeah, go ahead.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I work with, uh, O E S quite a bit. That's something that we can ask if they can export that information and send over the Kern County G I S, which would allow that same to both, uh, Fire and P D.
And maybe Public Works, there would be like three, four-
Delay, it's just layers.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just a-
I understand it's layers, but because it's tied into RIMS and, and other secret squirrel stuff?
But usually the, uh, excuse me, usually the G I S mapping is compatible, so you can send that G I S mapping to other agencies generally.
Okay.
So it's something that I can help reach that topic with Kern County O E S and the Dispatch Center for U C C. We can see if that can be dumped into their systems as well, because we can do that. We're doing that now with our hydrant system, so we're going to add our hydrant information to the Kern County G I S database.
Okay.
So they should be able to do the same.
Cool. Thank you, sir. So that's something we can look at. Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I, I have a, several. Um, as, as everybody knows, I've talked about being in the Air Force, and one thing that we had at, uh, several of the Air Force bases that I was at, and I don't know if Commissioner Creighton had it when he was at whatever bases he was at, but the Air Force has a really good G I S system. A suggestion to you before you, um, do anything, I would suggest that you try and get permission, and I can help you get it, to go to the Civil Engineering Squadron at Edwards. I don't know if they have it, but again, I came from a huge base coming here, but our base had a very good G I S system, and you might want to look at theirs and see what other, um, enhancements you can get for ours.
Okay.
Um, and matter of fact, I'll try and remember to call them tomorrow and, and talk to them about that.
Yeah, we can definitely do that.
Um, my only question is, like, a lot of times in this city, we have good ideas for, for different projects, uh, and we don't follow through with them, so, um, the company that you have doing it, um, just need to make sure that the amount that they gave us a quote for thirty-something thousand plus the tax, um, amount, it, it comes to that and that your forty-something that you have on hand, um, it doesn't come to that or over that.
Yeah, so we give the quote to Cal O E S, and then they work directly with Geocom. And so it's no more than our quote, is what they're, they would give us.
And you're going to, is that for one installation, or is that for how many, how many-
Creation of the map.
Yeah, it's, they're going to create the map in whatever layers, in whatever specifications we request, and then they're going to install it, and then it's going to be yearly maintenance for five years.
Understand, but the map will be accessible to, um, like, say you had ten clients, uh, yeah, so that's what you're getting, an enterprise license?
Yes, multiple users.
No, I mean, that's what you're getting.
Uh, yes.
Wouldn't the map be a, a public, uh, information?
It, some of it's, uh, like, discussed, discussed, it was a, it's a layered system, so there's some features that we would probably add on to it that normally the, the public probably wouldn't access.
I mean, I, it seems to me that, uh, years ago, the city paid for satellite mapping of California City for the purposes of, of building a G I S system. And that was, uh, we paid for it, I, I, that much I can tell you. Uh, I would imagine that Public Works would have, uh, uh, desire to have an accurate, uh, mapping system for their infrastructure issues. Um, it, it's all the same map in the end. It, it's just, uh, uh, maybe certain parts of it are, are confidential and, and can't be accessed, uh, by everyone else, but it's certainly the, it's the, the foundation is California City, I would think. Anyway.
I just wonder on the updates, because like, for my job on the base, I use a lot of different products. I use from, um, from, um, from the government, I get government maps, I get updates like every couple of days and so on. And, um, I just wonder, um, the, the maps that you're getting, they're going to be custom maps, you said, right?
Yes.
And, um, how often will they be updated?
We can update them quarterly.
And is there a fee for that?
No, it's included in it.
And so that fee is for lifetime updates?
Not lifetime. I believe it's five years.
Okay, five years, okay. Again, I, I suggest that you, um, after the meeting, I'd like to talk to you or whoever's doing it, Chief Hurtado can provide me that, and I will contact the Civil Engineering tomorrow morning.
Yeah, it'll be me.
Okay.
Excuse me, Mayor, I have a question. Regarding the fiscal impact, is this a charge looking forward for fiscal year nineteen-twenty? The new budget year?
Yeah, it takes about seven to eight months for, once the city manager signs the contract before we actually, uh, realize the, the expense. It's going to be just like the other O E S grants, where, uh, O E S and G I would exchange the funds, and we'd be paying the, um-
Tax only.
Sales tax, yeah.
Yeah, so tax only.
But I, I agree with what, um, with Director Ibanez, what he just asked. If we make that decision now, that will come against eighteen-nineteen funds. So, um, Chief Hurtado, you might want to wait until the new fiscal year and then make that, and it'll be against nineteen-twenty funds rather than eighteen-nineteen funds.
Right, just like we have on the, the lease purchase of the, the Tahoes, we're, uh, incurring that expense over a four-year, um, because it's going to take about eight months before we actually see the project. Just wanted to make sure we get this completed.
And I understand, so the execution, though, the initial execution is going to require funds, so if we do that now before, uh, the new fiscal year, that will be charged against eighteen-nineteen funds.
Well, I'd have to ask, so are we charging, are we just signing a contract? Or are we actually signing payment with contract? We probably wouldn't get, uh, the invoice for about seven or eight months. If there's a way to set aside the current funding for that, that'd be ideal.
But-
But we would-
But we're talking-
Roll it into-
But I agree with-
I'm lost for a second. We're talking twenty-five-hundred, or two-thousand-five-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars and fifty-eight cents, right?
Right.
That's it.
But if, if you make the contract now, then it's against nineteen-twenty, eighteen-nineteen funds, so you have to charge it in this F Y.
It's a timing issue, correct? So we're just trying to figure it out, so regardless, if it's twenty-five-hundred, we need to figure it out in terms of proper budgeting, and when, if it's a contractor, et cetera, et cetera. That's what we're trying. So if we, if we close the books before we get the invoice, um, right, Dave, it would probably be best to, should we keep it in next year or set aside- be best to, should we keep it in next year or set aside?
I would have to check the balance on that, but we could make an accrual for it. But I just want Council to know that this is something that's already been stipulated in the staff report, that it's for 1920, so.
The way this contract reads, it would be, it basically says the first 18, 18,882.15 would be invoiced net upon 45 days upon completion of the GIS data updates. So, I'm guessing that's going to be somewhere down the road. So, the first payment, net 45 upon completion of the GIS data updates. So, that's, that sounds like after they get everything.
Yeah, it'd be after we get the product.
And then there's other payments after that. 45 days at the beginning of year one maintenance services, and then year two, year three, year four, year five, it's like 3,000 each year thereafter.
Understand, but my question to the city attorney is, and again, not accountant versus lawyer, if you enter that contract in 1819, then you need to put aside some, if it is a valid contract, you need to put aside some monetary amounts for 1819.
Only, only if there's payments in 1819. So, if you're contracting for something 1920, but you're doing it now, but no payments are due until then, you could, you could budget it in that year. But you are committing yourself by agreeing to this now, that you're going to have that money in 1920, and not just then, but you're, you've got five years there of maintenance that you're agreeing to.
That's down the road. That's down the road. So, we could budget it now, but we wouldn't pay, and we wouldn't be in, involved until 1920 budget time, correct?
We could commit to it now via contract, and then make, make aside the funds in 1920.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I don't see the contract in front of me, but if you say that we don't have to pay anything in 1819, that's fine.
I'm not seeing anything, unless I'm missing something.
Anybody else have any questions up here? Anybody from the public?
Jim Creighton again, California City. I think you might be a little bit mistaken. The GIS that you're referring to is for Public Works, is probably way different than what Public Safety needs. They should be two separate ideas. We had a presentation by Arrow Engineering not too long ago, that showed GIS mapping for many cities within Southern California and Northern California. And basically, what they show is footprints of buildings, zone maps, utilities, to include gas, electric, sewer, all that stuff. I'm not sure that Public Safety, Public Safety needs to know where sewer manholes are. And yes, they all come in different layers, but, and yes, Civil Engineering on base has extensive GIS, I've used it many times. But the Arrow Engineering one, when and if it comes to your attention, is very comprehensive and worthy of strong consideration, because it will help not only developers, but it will help staff as well in identifying, hey, you've got a gas line there you can or cannot build, or you don't have gas, or you're going to have to be on propane, things of that nature. But I think the Public Safety one should be totally separate from infrastructure.
Okay, and you've seen it, so I mean, you and I have the same background, looking at that kind of stuff.
Your background's not the same as mine, sir, sorry.
Well, but I mean, but as a, as a, in charge of the CE Squadron, I mean, I don't have the finite stuff that you did, but I mean, I've looked at all of that.
Sure, and the one, the one at Edwards is available to the public with certain layers. There's certain layers that they allow the public to turn off and on. And Arrow Engineering has the same one, the same advantages for, if they, if they get a chance to do the cities.
Anybody else from the public? Seeing nobody else coming back up here, well, let's look for a motion.
Motion to authorize an interim city manager to sign the contract with GEOCOM to commence the map layer, mapping layer build and to install the mapping into the CCPD Dispatch Center.
A second.
Got a first and a second, roll call vote, please.
Council Mayor, Liz Sinevich?
Yes.
Paris?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Stump?
Yes.
Mayor McGuire?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Council. MV2, lease purchase of fire apparatus, CC firefighters, and Chief Goodell.
Good evening, stakeholders of California City, mayor, councilperson, staff, and citizens we serve. Let me, before I move into the staff report, I would like to say, way big team effort. The fellas and the lady that I work with have all contributed toward this endeavor, as has the city in giving us direction in how they would like to have us proceed in acquiring an engine for California City Fire Department. And so, here's the staff report. Our first out-in frontline Engine 19 is tired. It's performed well for almost 20 years, but it needs to be retired as our primary engine and moved to a reserve status. We recommend the immediate replacement of our current Engine 19 with a Pierce Puck, stands for Pierce's Ultimate Configuration, which is a Type 1 Engine 19. Your, our California City Fire Department anticipated this replacement, informed an apparatus committee to evaluate our city's needs and search out and find the ideal fire department apparatus to meet or exceed our requirements, that's all of us, citizens, fire department, us, in expectations. When evaluating our needs, we considered and abided by the National Fire Protection Association's NFPA Apparatus Performance and Design Standards. Other selection and acquisition criteria included Engine 19's current condition, pretty decrepit, but she's serving us well. We considered also city and department needs, parts and service availability, history of previous engines, mechanical failures, and compatibility with assisting fire department's equipment. The requested Engine 19 replacement is the initial step within a succession plan to guarantee immediate and perpetual apparatus fleet stability, dependability, and suitability. The initial and critical step toward this objective is to acquire a right-fit, first-out Engine 19 to replace our frontline engine. The purchase of Engine 19 and its addition to the California City Fire Department's response will optimize services to the cities, excuse me, to the citizens of the city of California City. Apparatus Committee specialists have worked diligently and intelligently to find the right, all-risk, durable, and reliable engine within the context of a strategically sensible succession plan. The Pierce Puck Engine, Engine 19 is that practical, fully equipped and sturdy engine, which starts out and perpetuates our larger and more comprehensive mission to furnish our citizens and our community with first-class fire and emergency services in time, all the time, and every time. Operating within the context of your, our California City Fire Department's mission to achieve and sustain service quality, self-sufficiency, and fiscally prudent decision-making, our committee heartily and unanimously recommends the Pierce Puck as the City of California City's Engine 19. Recommendation, staff recommends that the city council adopt Resolution 05-19-2789, authorizing staff to proceed with the purchase of one fire apparatus from Pierce Manufacturing in executing a lease purchase agreement with PNC Equipment Finance. Fiscal impact, lease purchase of Pierce Puck fire engine for a total cost of $753,358.40, amortized over a seven-year time span, incurring $88,002.40 in interest charges at an annual payment of $120,000, excuse me, $120,194.40 per year, for a final payment cost of $841,360.80. The annual payment has been budgeted for in the 2018, 2019 budget, and will also be budgeted for in upcoming budgets. Environmental impact, none. Community impact, safer and more secure, City of California City, community, and residents, because the proposed engine will do more safer, better, and faster. Thought it would be enlightening and educational to me every time I review it, but to staff, to our city council people, to our mayor, and to our constituents to view a program. Educational, not, not too industry-specific, too wordy, unlike the orator right now. Anyways, make a little presentation, a PowerPoint presentation, and then after that, we can ask questions and answer them, and have a discussion if necessary.
Good evening, Mayor, Council staff. Just a short presentation, we'll try to keep it a little bit short, we'll try and move through it a little bit quickly. But if there's any questions that arise, please let me know. With Measure C, they spoke very loudly, we wanted to give them the best, because they gave us the funding and the responsibility to give them the best, so we can provide the best service possible to the community. So, we had an intensive search for an affordable and a quality engine that will last us for a considerable period of time. We formed an apparatus committee of experts from within the fire department, captain and engineer, also working with several manufacturers to form what we've never had before, which is a department specification. We've always had a demo unit, basically going at a sale-type engine, that really hasn't done as much good, that really wasn't meant for our environment. So, this engine was actually designed and specified by this apparatus committee for almost 12 months, almost a year of time. So, they would be purposeful and effective in our community. So, it was built to withstand our environment and some of the challenges we face responding to emergencies in our city. We believe because of the quality of the engine, it'll last us a significant amount of time. So, as the chief mentioned, it stands for Pierce Ultimate Configuration. Basically, what that means is that they have done a lot of innovative design work compared to older fire engines. They've moved some of the critical components, like the pump housing, that really allows for a considerable amount of compartment space, which was taken up by the pump and panel for pumping the water. With the spacious compartments, it really gives us the most ability to protect our equipment. Currently, right now, we have very cramped compartments. These compartments are actually causing damage to our equipment. So, with the ability to properly place our equipment in them, secure them, it'll increase the longevity and actually reduce our repair costs on our equipment. Even though it's a much bigger engine with a lot more compartment capacity, it's got a very short wheelbase, which makes it very agile, so it's going to act like a, like a smaller fire engine. Has some of the biggest chassis reinforcements in the industry currently. And with the power plant that it has, it has superior power and braking. Currently, right now, there's about 100 units in Southern California of that same type of model. With the pump design, it's got easy access. Previous pump housings took several hours of taking the engine out of service to do basic maintenance or repairs. With this, we can access the same components within minutes, instead of having to disassemble the fire engine and take it out of service for hours or days. We can now deal with most stuff in minutes to hours. The equipment load per compartment is pretty heavy-duty. Most of our equipment's going to be around the 250-pound mark, so having double the capacity is really going to make those compartments last and have a lot of longevity for those compartments. So, with this specification, because we've built a specification for this community and for this environment, we'll be able to repeat this in the future. So, as we need to replace this engine, we can build off of the spec, accounting for new technology and changes we need to make, so we can make those fine tuning, and basically get the same fire engine into the future, and really decrease our time from paper to purchase, a matter of days to weeks, instead of spending a year trying to build a new specification for the department. So, that'll allow us to rotate our equipment in, in the future, so that as we get new equipment, we can put the frontline apparatus to reserve and rotate those apparatuses out so that they can serve for the timeframe that they're meant for, but not having to serve triple or quadruple what they're designed to serve. So, some of these are just a little bit of visuals of the differences. You can see in the bottom center of the screen, that's where a majority of the pump components are. Generally, they would be off to the right and up, taking up compartment space, so it frees up a lot of space for us with that design. Notice that the big panel in the, right in the center is the main pump panel. This is actually behind a door, which increases its longevity, protects from equipment striking it, from breaking the components, from being exposed to the weather, the sun, the sand, which will actually cause more maintenance issues. So, this will actually increase the apparatus's overall longevity, decrease for maintenance, decrease costs over time. You can see the spacious compartments, so everything has ample room, so nothing is damaged by us having to stack equipment on top of the equipment. That'll decrease our damage to equipment, increases longevity, and also increases our step-off time. So, when we get out of the fire engine, we're not going to have to dig through compartments to find equipment, not going to have stuff fall out, that'll be safe, quick for us to access the equipment and bring it to the scene of emergency, whether it be for a fire or medical emergency. It's a little bit hard to see in this picture, but right underneath where the cab lifts up, that's actually where the pump is. So, just by lifting the cab, we can access all its components, whereas before, we'd have to take apart a lot of the exterior panels, remove those, took several hours. So, this will make basic maintenance that we do monthly, and even annual maintenance is much, much quicker. And in many cases, we may not actually have to ever take the engine out of service, we can leave it in service, continue to work on it, and quickly get back into service. A couple of the safety advances, typically, we'd have to step up quite a ways to grab our hose lines, step back down with the hose. So, at this configuration, it's actually at arms-reach level, on the ground level. So, as firefighters are pulling the hose, they don't have any unnatural motions of stepping up, stepping down, which can cause knee, ankle, and back injuries, neck injuries, from unnatural pulling and stepping down motions, especially if there's uneven terrain where they're stepping. So, this will be much quicker and much safer for deploying our hose lines to get water in the fire as quickly as possible. Previous engines didn't give much thought to firefighter safety, they had very few protection measures other than seat belts, typically fiberglass-type cabs. They crumpled pretty, pretty easily in a traffic accident. These ones have 12 main roof supports, instead of the normal six, solid A pillars, which means most of the supports are solid, pretty heavy-duty, very heavy-duty frame rails and cross-members. And this also means, because this is more heavy-duty, even though we're carrying more weight, it's going to bear that weight much better than previous apparatus, and really increase the longevity of the equipment. We're also compatible with our surrounding agencies. Edwards, Kern County, and a lot of statewide mutual aid resources run Pierce, and they run Detroit Engines, which is going to be the power plant in here, so that'll allow us to be compatible. Other fire departments will be familiar somewhat with our equipment, so in emergency situations, they can make changes to our equipment as far as the pump panel, emergency shutdown. they can make changes to our equipment as far as the pump panel, emergency shutdown, and activating certain equipment should be somewhat familiar to them, as well as we'll be familiar with theirs on incidents. Maintenance is a big issue for us. Our engine was on a large campaign fire many years ago, and because the engine wasn't compatible with everybody else, as far as the power plant goes, the mechanics that were on that fire could not hook up to our engine and figure out what's wrong with it. So we had to low-boy that to a mechanic, which is very pricey, being that it has a compatible engine that can be diagnosed in the field very rapidly, and usually, they carry those extra spare parts to provide the maintenance. We can utilize Kern County Fire Department. They have a full certified auto shop that is certified by Pierce to work on Pierce's. They also have an emergency 24/7 mobile mechanics that can be dispatched pretty much anywhere in the county, and they're typically on most large campaign fires that can provide that maintenance. We also have a local fleet with very similar services that is semi-local, and California also has a fully certified repair facility for extensive repairs in case of a major So we can also have them do, put them on a contract to do monthly maintenance, so a lot of the things that we would take it out of service for, come to the fire station, do that maintenance there, very quickly, rapidly keep us in service without having to take it out of service, put a reserve engine in service through that same maintenance. Warranty-wise, it's got a 10-year structural for the body, 10-year plumbing, 6-year pump warranty and a lifetime warranty for the tank. Pierce has been manufacturing since 1913 with about 45,000-plus units that they have contributed to the fire service. So our purchase is through MPP.gov, which is basically, has been a competitive bid process. It was put out by MPP.gov through a lead agency, and this lead agency did multiple bids, multiple vendors competed for this award. Pierce was the one that won this bid process, which was done in the standard three-bid RFP. So in this process, actually helps us eliminate the RFP process locally. So by eliminating the local RFP process, it really saves us a lot of time and money, because otherwise, we'd have to do this process all over again and probably delay the engine about another year to year and a half. So MPP.gov basically has the no-haggle lowest price guarantee for that bid period and allows us to piggyback on the purchase from that lead agency, but allows us to build our own specification without having to use another agency's specification to modify it, so we can build from the ground up exactly what we need with our specification. So the apparatus committee was very diligent in removing a lot of the higher-priced, unneeded bells and whistles and going for options that were really needed for our environment and what our mission for emergency response is, to maintain a balanced, lowest price possible for what we're getting. So again, just to recap on the lease purchase price. So $753,358.40 is the unit price, and then plus the additional sales tax, performance bond, tire fee. We get a $25,000 discount upfront for purchasing through Pierce, PNC, their financing corporation. With that, the additional out-the-door cost plus the interest rate, which is about a 3.85, and we've calculated that payment of a $120,194.40 over the seven years approximately plus or minus for a seven-year loan. So again, we wanted to provide the community to the very best. They were gracious enough to give us the funding to be able to complete our mission, provide the best way for us to respond to the community for their emergencies. And again, our apparatus committee worked very diligently, tirelessly, for nearly 12 months to research and build what we need exactly for this community that will serve us, instead of a demo unit that didn't serve us very well, that needs a lot of maintenance. We believe that this apparatus will serve us well into the future. If there's any questions that you guys may have, we also brought one of our apparatus committee members that may be able to answer any technical questions you may have. Otherwise, we're available.
Anybody here have any questions?
Jeremy, could you go over the three-bid process again as to why we're required by law to get three bids when we're going this much money?
Absolutely.
So could you explain that, how it works?
So our municipal code allows us to basically piggyback, it's in the language of the municipal code, that allows us to utilize another governmental agency's RFP. So they made an RFP as a lead agency through MPP.gov and the Association of Fire Chiefs. They put this out, they advertise it in the paper, just like we would do, they posted it in the public, they did minimum of three bids, multiple manufacturers actually bid this, Pierce, E1, Seagrave, something I believe, and several others bid this, and they were awarded that contract. So because of that lead agency was awarded that contract, that allows us, as a governmental agency, to use that same RFP, saving us the hassle and trouble of going through the same exact process to arrive at the same exact point, saving us time and money, which is the point of it. So we are members of MPP.gov, it didn't cost us a dime, it's free for us, but the member benefit is kind of like getting a Costco membership. They've gone out, they've done the headhunting to give us the lowest possible price for what they could negotiate with them, and then with that pricing list, we get that to build our specification.
Thank you.
Questions?
I already talked to the fire chief about this when I went and saw the presentation. I am 100% behind the engine, but I have some concerns about the money that is spent, you know, in different departments, and we need to get through a good budget and make sure that we don't spend more than we have. Currently, the payroll sheets that I've received from finance, and what I did is, I looked at those, and we're going to have over a million dollars of overtime again this year. The amount of money that we have in overtime, as I talked to Chief Goodell, I told him we could pay for that engine and we could buy nine SUVs for the city in just the amount of overtime. So can we afford the engine? And we also looked at that it would be over six years, but our, or seven years, and our money for Measure C runs out in five years. So what I'd like to do is have Chief Goodell, since he is in charge of the fire department, what is important to you and your guys? And you guys need to sit down and come up with that. You only have so much money, and that amount of money, are you going to put it on a fire engine? Are you going to put it on training? Are you going to put it on what? And you need to do a heart-to-heart on how you're going to handle your money, and that money also includes overtime, and you need to be creative in what you do so that you can afford this engine that you really need.
Can I say something first, or? Well, I planned on doing that, I brought it up here first, and then I was going to send it downstairs and then bring it back up. Tell you what, we'll just bring it up to the public. Let's go. If anybody wants to come up and say anything.
Afternoon again, Keith Middleton. I just have one question. Does a lease purchase agreement allow us to pay this off early without penalty?
To my knowledge, yes, it does. We can prepay it all upfront. If we are on that lease payment, we can pay it without penalty.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Come on, Al.
I wasn't going to say anything at this point, but since he gave me the opportunity. Ron Smith, Mr. Mayor, California City, or California City Council, thank you. I'd be very interested to hear what you guys are going to say at first. I just wrote down just some numbers. It's a lot of money, a lot of money spent. We spent $300,000 on an issue, spent 112, spent 77 on a consultant for finance, spent 24 on a project, not sure how much more was spent on that, at least another $14,000 was spent on that, $5,900 on another project. A lot of money's gone out. Overtime for fire department, they're down, they're down, folks. It's going to cost more money to keep things, keep things safe, down a captain for a long time, down an engineer now. So I'd like to hear what you guys have to say first. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Al Hudson, $750,000 is a lot of money, but for the quality of the apparatus, you've got to pay for it. From what I understand, this will have a Detroit Diesel engine. Now, we all know that Detroit Diesel makes a top-of-the-line engine, and it could be serviced in an emergency by most, any diesel mechanic. Design has been custom-designed to fit the needs that our fire department needs, and that will greatly help them do their job of serving the public. I've done some research, and like anything, like anything mechanical, you're going to find some issues with them, but everything has issues, and it's a minimization of the issues that we're looking for and the maximization of the utility and reliability. And from what I have seen on this vehicle and have talked about, this meets those specifications needs and qualities. The only thing of it is, I just love to argue about price. And if we could talk to these manufacturers and say, listen, this is the bottom line, you want our business, this is the price that we're willing to pay, because one of our previous mayors some time ago did some, did a report that says that the city needs to live within its financial means, and by doing our damnedest to get a better price for this piece of machinery, that would serve the public well and show the public that everyone is doing their jobs the best that they can and trying to get the biggest bang for the dollar. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
Can I speak now? Oh, somebody's in a bad mood. I've got a couple of questions. Which account is this coming out of?
Our capital expense.
Do we know the account number, and how much is in the capital expense account?
Originally, we were budgeting about $300,000 for all of our capital expenses this last budget time. We're probably going to have to revisit that a little bit and adjust it, but that's something that we had planned for in some basic forecasting initially last budget, was to forecast at least $300,000 for each budget cycle for the capital expense. I don't recall which budget line number that is, but it'll be out of the fire department capital expense fund.
You got it? Great. While they're looking that up, what's the status on our new old engine?
Friday morning.
No, I was told that two or three weeks ago? I did?
Friday morning.
This Friday? Is it going to be going into service? Okay, because I love 19, she has served this city proudly, but she's tired. And that's an understatement, she needs a lot of work.
The plan being with that is we move stuff over, we've had it well-fabricated, well-fit for our needs. And so we move stuff over, obviously run the Alf through its paces for a couple of weeks, month or so, get the, loosen her up a little bit, and then, and then when we're comfy with that and we can afford it, which we would hope and we've budgeted for pretty immediately, we would move the Seagrave down to get probably a phased-in, bring it up to where it needs to be.
Because there's, she's hurting. Yes, sir?
Yes, it is account 19-422-740.
What is it?
There is a $300,000 budget line item for it.
Question for you, where is fire on the line as far as their amount that they were given this year, and how much have they expended?
I would have to look that up, so I can come back, or I can send City Manager Lynn an email, and she can forward it on to council with up-to-date budget numbers. But I do have a question for you, Jeremy. In your presentation, you mentioned that your succession plan, is that something we're committed to through the consortium once we, or does it go out the bid again?
No, I mean, with, this whole process allows us to continue sourcing through the same vendor. That's kind of the idea, but the succession planning is not through anybody, it's just our own plan of how we are going to replace our equipment. So as we get equipment that ages out, if it's got a seven-to-10-year lifespan, we want to move that apparatus from frontline to reserve status, so, and it could still give us another 10 years of life as a reserve, maybe even longer, but that's the idea, is to start rotating the apparatus correctly within the timeframes that they're meant to serve. Currently, our Seagrave engine 19, I mean, she's served since 1999 for most of the period, and it's about four times the lifespan that she should have served. So at some point, that engine is going to give up the ghost, and even with the Alf here, we're still going to be down, we're not going to have a reserve engine once that thing goes back. So that's the problem, is we're still going to be stuck with one fire engine again, and if that goes down, it really puts us in a bad spot as far as providing appropriate emergency response, bringing the appropriate tools to the scene of an emergency, having to do that. So really, having that succession plan going forward, and that's something that we are talking about as a capital replacement fund, that if, working with finance, that we can squeeze that extra money aside, and that was our plan, is if there's enough left over, that we could put that, so as we're approaching the end of the special tax time, worst-case scenario, that hopefully we could pay a majority, if not all, that off as a contingency issue to look at.
This is going to be the first time in the city's history that an engine's been specked out for the city. It has never, ever, ever, ever happened. It's either been used, it's been used ones that were purchased, or demos, and just dealt with what you had. So, yeah, this took about a year. How long before, if this were to be approved, how, what is the timeframe that we would see the new engine?
It's about nine months, which is pretty phenomenal, because most manufacturers that we looked at previously, they're anywhere between a year and a half to two years, depending on most of their cycles, so that would put us out pretty far, it really puts us in a bad spot. So going with Pierce really gets us an engine pretty quick and allows us to stay in service like we should be and deliver the service that the community has entrusted us to deliver, and we can deliver that with that engine. And something, just as a point of fact, like you brought up, Mayor, we've had many demo engines. The Seagrave was a demo. Being on that apparatus when it first arrived, it cost a lot in man-hours and fabrication equipment to get our stuff into it, but it did have issues. Had a couple turbo failures, and I believe that through a Had a couple turbo failures, and I believe it threw a rod through the side of the cowl. So all those things, because it was a demo, we had to work those bugs out. Costs a lot of money. The Spartan that we had after that one nearly killed me and Captain Roach many years ago, because also, again, it was a demo. It wasn't built properly. It was the last parts in the shelf that were, they put that engine out as the last apparatus out of their line. And that thing ripped out the rear differential, and literally pulled both of those forward. It almost flipped us over. And it's quite a sight to see the yellow lines of the road. When you're looking straight, actually start walking up the windshield. And thankfully, it ripped out all the air lines, would set the air brakes, and it coasted us to a nice, safe stop right at the limit line of 395. So had we been on the ass curbs, we probably would, I probably wouldn't be here today, for sure. All the other equipment that we have that's been a demo, it's the same issues. It's just gonna cost us a lot of money to work out those demo bugs, where with this warranty, and it'd be coming from fresh off the floor with a quality engine, it may still have minor bugs. But I think in the long run, with the quality in the build, it's gonna save the city a lot of money in maintenance and other issues. And besides the engine itself, just having our equipment stored properly, you know, it's gonna save, like our rescue tools, you know, those hose lines. It's all very expensive, and we can't store it properly, because we don't have the room. But having that storage capacity to properly store it saves us a lot of maintenance costs in the future.
And just a side note, this is the only engine out there. This is a, this is a first-in engine, a type 1, that you'll have the ability to pump and roll. Doesn't happen with any other engine at all. And so basically, what happens, when you see fire engines sitting at a fire, they're parked, they're pumping water, and they're putting the wet on the red. With this engine, you'll be able to roll down the road. So if they happen to get sent out, and there's a wildland fire or brush fire on the side of the road, they can start spraying it and just keep rolling with it. And that's, that is unheard of on any other engine.
And Mayor, it also pumps at full capacity. Many other engines that have that capability, they can't pump at full capacity. It's all throttle-dependent, where this, you can have your full amount of water and pump and roll. Where the public may not understand the value of this is that when we put an engine in the pump, there's several steps that need to be put into play, which really anchors the fire engine. If you have to move that in an emergency, it takes, you know, a minute or two to get in, disengage the pump safely, get it back into the road mode. Whereas if you do have an emergency, you can just get in and move it right, right away, prevent it from getting damaged by fire or have any other issues. You can move it, repositioning also for holding roads. So if we get a fire that's threatening the community that where maybe our smaller apparatus are out fighting fire in the middle of it, the engine can actually put a foam blanket down alongside the road and continue going on to prevent that fire from crossing roads and endangering residential areas and other high-priority areas.
I don't have anything else, gentlemen?
I think we need it. I think the briefing that I received from the fire marshal and the fire chief the other day was great. However, my only concern, again, is the money. And I would like to meet with, or get information from Finance Director Ibanez on what you guys actually have. And maybe the chief can come up with a plan on how he will execute it. So, so I would like to, if it were up to me, if we could hold off for the next meeting, and by that time, we'll have that information from both of them, so we can make a decision then.
Just to follow up, Councilmember Stump, I will have the personnel model completed as well as the balance of this budget, so we can have a thorough discussion.
So what's your motion?
Motion is to delay it till the next council meeting. Again, I am definitely for it. I think it's a very good thing that we need. We need the engine. But we need to really look at our finances and see if we can actually afford it. And the chief, I'm sure, wants it. That's his number-one priority, and I'm sure he'll come up with creative ways to make that happen.
So there's a motion on the table to, to continue it till the next meeting, to make the decision for purchasing.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we got a first and a second. Since it's dealing with money, can we have a roll-call vote, please?
Sir?
The motion is to, is to basically table prior to purchase until after we get a chance to look at the budget. No?
Can you hear that? Could we hear that?
No, I just, I just haven't had a chance to review the contract itself. So I just wanted to make sure that if you were gonna approve it, that it was, be subject to city...
Can you guys hang, hang on for two weeks? I know, I know it's time-sensitive. I get that. Absolutely, sir.
Supervisor, Councilperson Stump, I, I see them as, as certainly related, but a bit separate and distinct, okay? And, and the, I believe it's with, I think it's outside of the scope of this proposal, this resolution, this staff report, to attach, and I say this respectfully, to attach a plan to tighten things up fiscally on, in the general budget, which I, I will do, and I've already started on a master plan, probably a third of the way there as far as priorities, staffing models, et cetera, which I can do, which I can easily do outside of what we're asking here. My fire marshal outlined to you, and, and, and I hope you can kinda feel, there's a little bit of an urgency here on, on getting things rolling. We've put in 12 months already of research. And I wanted it to be thorough. I wanted it to address, concentrate, focus on what we're talking about here. We're talking about a replacement apparatus that fits the needs of the California City Fire Department and the people that we protect, and the people that depend upon us. And, and I will, I will provide you, Jeremy and I will work together tirelessly for the next 12 days or so to get you what you want in, in cooperation with our finance director and our city manager and all, all other people who need to be in on it. But, but I'm encouraging you and my, my governing persons, who are answerable to, and I'm encouraging us to move forward today and concentrate, or this evening, and concentrate on what we're talking about right now and stay within scope. We're, we're talking about getting a fire engine. And it's been budgeted for, I'm, I'm 94.7% sure that we're well within the budget. We've budgeted, if, if it's gonna cost $120,000 next year, and we've budgeted $300,000, that's quite a bit of wiggle room. And, and we've thought out, we've concentrated on presenting you with a comprehensive convincing pack, convincing package of, of getting it done kind of immediately. And, and my preference is, and it's, it's just a recommendation, and again, a preference from kind of an expert sort of a person who is in touch with what my fire department people, what my firefighters need to best protect us. We don't wanna come up short on this, and in the fire department, short can be seconds, okay? And, and all the features that were, that were mentioned and outlined, if that engine gets here two weeks earlier than it, than it could've, had we delayed it, and we're able to get in and intervene in a critical spot and save somebody within that time period, and I know that sounds pretty pie in the sky, but I'm a firefighter, and that's what people pay us to do, is we, we make sure that we can intercede safely and expediently and efficiently. And I'm encouraging us this evening, and, and I know I have the support of my firefighters, let's concentrate on either approving or not approving a fire engine this evening. And then, if you wanna task me and us with getting that other stuff done, those other very important matters done, we, we will do that. And you can draw a timeframe, and, and Diego and all of us will work on it.
But Chief, the, the main thing is, we couldn't do it tonight anyway, because the city attorney has not approved, he has not looked at the contract. So we need to hold off on that anyway.
Okay. If, if, if legally, we're not able to proceed forward, then during the interim, we'll, we'll also get that together.
He said, he had hoped that we didn't do the vote, because he needs to review the contract. So we need to hold off anyway.
Councilman Stump, what we have provided is a sample of what we would get. It's not the actual contract until we formally go into this. We're not gonna receive the formal contract to actually sign. So I was hoping today that we could approve the purchase of the fire engine, pending the contract and the finances. Once those things are confirmed and solidified to your satisfaction, that we go ahead and sign those. But to move forward to get the approval, so we can have the appropriate contracts drawn up, and we can work with finance to show you where the money is.
All of us up here want the fire engine. I'm pretty sure that all of us want the fire engine. But you have to put the horse before the cart and so on. So again, what we need to do is, we need to get, just like we had the paperwork and everything for the police chief's GIS system, we had that here. We had the cost. City attorney looked at that, determined that it would be paid in next FY. We need to have the same stuff from you guys. You know, the presentation was awesome. And again, we all want it. But we need to, the, the minor things are, one, are we entering a contract that we can legally enter, and the city attorney will tell us that. And then, do we have the funds available? And the finance director will tell us that.
If, if we, if we sit there and for concept, give approval with the caveat that you're not gonna purchase this until after we get the numbers from finance, we're still moving forward, and plus, you're gonna get your answers from them as far as personnel cost, that being overtime. Is that... Actually, you have a motion in the second. Yes. So you really have gotten yourself off the... Okay, so we'll run with what we've got.
Well, let's ask the city attorney. Do people normally approve purchases before it's looked at legally and before it's looked at financially? What's your recommendation to us on that?
Well, I mean, this is, I mean, fire is indicating that there's timing issues, so you need to take that into account. But traditionally, you would, you would have a copy of the contract here, having, have it reviewed and obviously looked at the finances as well before you commit to something, so that would be normal.
We got a motion on, we got a motion?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I, I really want this engine, but I wanna do things right the right way. And, and Chief, will two weeks kill you?
It's, it, I wanna, I wanna do what's legally and fiscally correct. And, and, and it, it, we, we, you have looked at the financial stuff, correct?
You're on. I think you're on.
You're on.
Jeremy was going through the presentation in terms of what Pierce and, and with the discount. That's the first time I'm seeing the finances.
Okay, then if we, if we need to, to delay the, the formal approval, contingent on your scrutiny and direction and ultimate approval, we would hope.
I know that.
And Christian's input as far as legality and making sure our eyes are dotted and our t's are crossed. Number one, we appreciate your support. Number two, we'll do just what, what we're supposed to do with our cooperatives and the rest of the staff. And we appreciate, we appreciate your time and, and your philosophical approval.
Did you wanna modify your motion, adding that it would be put on the next?
I can put that on. Do you mind if I modify the motion? The motion would be to wait two weeks and approve it in two weeks if it's legally, all the legal uses there in the contract, and also if the money is there in the contract, money is there in finance.
Now, Councilman Stump, I believe in hearing what the fire marshal said, that the contract, he's just got a sample contract, and we're not gonna see the contract until we approve this. And I, and I feel we need to approve it tonight to proceed further. And when the contract comes up, we can do the final vote on it.
From my, from my perspective, it's confusing to me why, why they wouldn't give us a contract ahead of time, I guess. Normally, you wouldn't approve something in concept, only to get a contract later. But maybe that's how they do it. I'm not sure. I mean, I've never, it's not normal.
Mr. Mayor, we never had a chance for a second call, 'cause it's something very quickly.
Well, we're taking a vote, but go ahead, sir.
Yeah, well, we never had, we never had an opportunity for a second call.
Not, not everything's gonna be second call on it, but go ahead.
Well, I mean, that's, this is...
Go ahead. Go ahead.
That's how we did things. Mention is made of overtime. Right now, down an engineer, losing two firefighters. Overtime's gonna be, there's gonna be overtime. And this may be an incentive to keep our firefighters, that they're in a safe vehicle. Somebody brought up pie earlier, having your pie, eat it too. I just was there this week, had a fresh apple pie, it was still warm, right out of the oven, ice cream on it, they got a call. I got to finish mine. They're, they're on the truck, that hap, on the engine. That happens on a regular basis. And I don't know what we're gonna do with overtime when we're, when we're short firefighters. So I, I would, and I appreciate your concern about, about the finances. But I do think that this is a different thing. And I would encourage you, instead of going over past the special tax, the public safety tax, pay it off quicker and save some interest on that. That would be my thoughts. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so you were having a powwow?
Well, I'm just trying to explain to them what I would need, and we try to turn that around pretty quickly. And so they're gonna try and get those documents to me. Mayor, we did send the sample contracts, which we were told are kind of boilerplate, kind of insert agency, insert price, and insert kind of term based on what our specification was. So all that was sent, I believe, hopefully to the council. It was also sent to most other people to review. But I can contact tomorrow, first thing in the morning, and I'll get that contract hopefully by the end of the day, or depending how long it takes them to get that. I'll forward that to the city attorney and the city manager for his approval, and then forward it off from there. And then we'll work with finance for the remaining portion.
And will that, that will be satisfactory for you? Perfect. When does, just an overhead question, when, when do we meet again? Do we not have a, a budget meeting coming up pretty quick? Or is that not appropriate? Yeah. Oh, so there may be a reschedule on the budget meetings? Okay. 'Cause the next one was coming up on the 5th? Okay, okay. So, so we, when the next one comes up, when it... So we, when the next one comes up, whenever you've scheduled to come up, we could make our presentation with all the necessary information and hopefully get an approval.
All right. So if the audit's still consuming up, or we're going to postpone the budget meetings, the workshops?
I think I might have ordered this week. I mentioned that...
We're now doing two audits concurrently.
Yes.
So that is taking up a lot of my time at the moment. I did bring to city manager Lynn's attention that the budget, whether we decide to do a base budget, a zero base, we need to kind of come to some kind of agreement and then schedule our workshops. I'm waiting on that direction from her.
Then just to keep things going forward, how about we schedule an emergency meeting or a special meeting next week? Once all the paperwork's in, we can look at it, we'll look at the numbers, and we can move forward.
That works.
And I understand the pressure that you're under right now for the audits. And if, I think we talked to the city manager. Do you mind if I say to him on what we were talking about as far as the audits and the effect on the budget? If you have to do a continuing budget or whatever, you know, the most important thing as we've always talked about is passing the budget, I mean, passing the audit. So do whatever you have to do to pass that audit. We don't want any write-ups.
I agree. I agree.
So what's, motion-wise?
Motion-wise is, we will schedule this when we have our next meeting, which you will, as a mayor, schedule a special meeting when all of the two parameters are met.
And when would that occur? You would have all that information for us next week?
Yes.
Okay. So we could set up a meeting within a week?
Correct.
Just one second, please. Let me put this in perspective, please. We need to have a yes or a no. I'm sure everybody here has bought a home at some point in time. You sit down with your wife or your husband or your boyfriend or your girlfriend and you say, yeah, let's buy that house. Then you get the contract. These people that we're dealing with on that engine and our fire department, all they need to hear is, yes, we're going to do this. Then they will come forth with the contract. I've been a real estate broker most of my life. I would no more go through the trouble of writing out an exact contract until husband and wife said, yes, I want to buy the house. Think about it. That's all this company needs. That's all our fire chief needs and our marshal to be able to move forward. The motion should be, we're going to buy it.
Motion's already been made.
Well...
Vote on it. Got to vote on it.
Okay. So it doesn't pass and you're right, bring it back up?
Don't know.
No?
Don't know. We got to vote.
And it's different than a house because this, it has to be legal. And so the attorney's going to look at if it's legal.
A sample contract.
No, he's going to look at the actual contract.
Not going to get the actual contract. You're not hearing, Mr. Stumpf. Okay? You're not going to get the actual contract until they get a commitment that we're going to buy it. Then they will come forward with the actual contract.
Okay, so the motion is...
Motion, as I said before, and what we'll do is, as far as the time, which is a caveat that I added, that will be determined by a special meeting which the mayor will call, which will be probably next week when the legal and financial considerations are dealt with.
Do you second that, sir? The, are you going to second that one? Yes. Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Lucenovic?
Yes.
Paris?
No.
Mayor Potem Stumpf?
Yes.
Mayor McGuire?
No. Make a motion, make a motion that we move forward with this. Motion fails. Make a motion that we do it right now. Go ahead and make the purchase or agree to the purchase subject to the inspection of the contract and the finances available.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Councilmember Lucenovic?
Yes.
Paris?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Stumpf?
I'll go with that, yes.
Mayor McGuire?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay. Public business from the floor. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons designing to address the council on any matter not on this agenda or for which the council has jurisdiction. Please state your name for the record and please limit your comments to three minutes. Public business from the floor.
Good evening, Mayor McGuire, again. Where did Jean go and council? Two of you left. I just wanted to reach out and say thank you for your support. We are working on improving our economic policies, we hope, together. Appreciate your support as well, Dr. Nick, for spearheading the workshop, some of the data exchange. And I want to also say to you today that rebranding California City is a possibility for our community. There's been talk at the planning commission possibly about a corridor study and other things that can help us attract people along the boulevard instead of what we have today, the hodgepodge. There's lots of different policies that we can work on together that will improve the overall community for the long run. And so I hope in the next several months, possibly years, we can work together on superior policies. We're going to need to have some kind of conversation, exchange, to know what you're interested in and so we can work on attracting those particular industry clusters. One example, aviation, automotive, obviously cannabis, housing, all these industry clusters. There's no reason we can't go after them and attract them here. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, sir. I think Al was waiting to see if you...
Good evening, Al Hudson again. I've got about five items here, real quickly.
Okay.
Let's make, Mr. Platt denied the public access to the city archives. Let's change that. The next item is, let's bring the public comments back to the front because we feel like we're unimportant and we don't matter. That's what it feels like. The next item is, I think on the agenda, there should be a statement advising the reader that obtaining recordings, that they can obtain recordings from the city clerk. That should be a statement on the agenda. The next item is if, since Councilwoman Johnson wants to give out school awards, that this is not the proper form. She could resign or do them at the school, not take up council and the public's time on that. It's not appropriate. The council does not have any jurisdiction or say-so over it. The last item is the goals and objectives of the city. What are the goals and objectives that this council wishes to attain and direct the city manager to accomplish? Could I have answers?
As far as the archives, we'll bring that up to the, to the city manager right now. Wave comments, put the comments back to the front of it. This meeting, these meetings are for city business. That's first and foremost. That's why they were moved the way it is. Whether or not anybody else wants to move, I don't want to move it back up there because we're taking care of city business and that's what this meeting is for, nothing else. It's for city business. The agenda, recordings, things, I will check in on that and I'll get back to you on that one.
You can get it.
Yeah, I don't see why you couldn't. All he wants, all he's looking for is something on there to say that it's available to the public. That's, that was all that was. As far as council member Johnson handing out awards to kids, I think it's kind of important. This is me. I'm not speaking on behalf of any other council members. It's kind of important to recognize them.
May be important, but they are put ahead of public comment. And they take about a half an hour. I've been timing them.
And as far as the goals and objectives, that's going to be set in along with the budget. Because that's what it comes down to, money. And then we can set our goals and objectives.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, council, as I understood what you just said, public comment is not part of public business and I would submit to you, a public comment is part of public business. And I would encourage whoever is assisting the young people to be here for the character awards, part of character is showing up when you receive an award. And there's a number, there's a number of the young people that are being recognized that aren't even coming for the award. Something's broken, something needs to be fixed. After the first week, we're seeing more and more kids not even showing up. This is broken. Public comment needs to go to the front. This is, it was, this was a very clear attempt with just what you said, out of the abundance of the heart, the mouth speaketh. The public comment is not part of city business. It is part of city business and you ought to hear from the people that elect you. Last meeting, I asked a series of questions and I realize our city manager is incredibly busy. I am very grateful for the phone call I received from her. You shared with me right after the meeting, when I asked this first question about the cost of the remodel of the office that is now the mayor's office, and you told me it was $5,900 right after the meeting. I think it could have been shared then. Tonight, there was a citizen that asked questions. You immediately answered the questions for Mrs. Macedonio. You immediately asked the questions for, answered the questions for Al Hudson. But last meeting, I was supposed to wait on this, you told me right after the meeting, $5,900. City manager Lynn called me up and told me that the $5,900. I believe, though, that that was just a demo. I'd like to know how much the materials were. I'd like to know the total cost. I'd like to know how much of overtime, was it time and a half? Was it double time for the, at least one city employee that was working the weekend on that? Two city employees? $5,900 is just, that's just a very small amount. And this is city business, sir.
Yes.
For citizens to ask, what in the world is going on? And I never got the answer, why in the world was $5,900 spent when it was not going out for bids? I also asked, how much was the total cost for the remodel between building and planning? I know that there was at least a $4,000 check, at least a $7,500 check, and at least a $2,500 check over and above supposedly the $24,000, which the city council said there will not be any change orders to this. This is, this is city business. I also asked if there was a severance that was paid to the outgoing city manager, found out it was a check for $112,000. All that stuff could have been answered. And you're choosing, sir, to answer some people and not answer other people. And that's just not simply fair. And I would encourage you, I would encourage you to be consistent. And if you're going to answer some citizens, answer all the citizens. But this is the second time I've asked these same questions. And I understand that our city manager is incredibly, is incredibly busy. I'm very thankful for the work she does. All this does is make more work for staff when you could answer the question right now and not task any staff with that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Hearing and seeing then? Looking for a motion? Oh, AV 1234, that's right. I don't have any, anything from the agenda from council? Council?
I just have one comment. We had talked about it in the closed session and I can talk about it here, but that is, and I was told to talk about it here, and that is, I would like to, as a council member, assist the finance department as far as helping them a little, as far as showing them how to do zero-based budgeting. And am I saying it right? Maybe. And that's what I would like to do. So I want the public to know that I will be doing that to help them. Mr. Ibanez is, well, the city manager has agreed to it. Mr. Ibanez has agreed to it and the council has agreed to it. So I will be assisting them. And this is the budget before it comes to even, just the, on how to do it, so.
Can I have my second call?
On reference to?
Retail, cannabis license. We're losing money every day, every day. And, you know, conditional use permit? The attorney would have to be able to tell us that. But I think the city council could waive a conditional use permit, providing one was in process of being filed, so that a license could be obtained from the state for a retail store. We are losing business. The county has shut the retail outlets down. The most, you know, I know that we're, my group has approved to have a store and to have a delivery only. And, but we need the license for the store in order to secure that property up there at 14 and CCB. That is the prime one, no question about it. And somebody said, well, what about the other two guys that already have their license from the city? I said, tell them to put a sign on our corner. There's enough business out there and we get 6% of that to the city. We're losing money by leaps and bounds. And it sits, and it sits, and it sits. If we don't want retail, then we would not, should maybe not have put an ordinance in the first place. I don't know. But I know there's not enough money in delivery only to make it worthwhile for us to drop a million and a half dollars just to put it on the ground.
Okay. I have to, I have to keep on with council agenda. We're out of, we're out of sequence, okay? Give me a second. Done? Any AV 134s? I have none. Now we're looking for the motion.
Make the motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everybody, for coming. Thanks, everybody, for coming.